Yep. Oh gosh. No? Alright, good. Alright.
Good evening. I would now like to call this October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, regular board meeting to order. Can we all stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll now ask board members to read the mission and goals.
The mission of the school district of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
The district goals are academic excellence in an evolving world, to prepare future-ready learners who persevere, adapt, problem-solve, think critically, and are supported by engaging learning experiences and intentional use of technology. Belonging: honor every individual's inherent dignity through equitable, inclusive, and diverse practices. Social-emotional growth: build a learning community that prioritizes social-emotional wellness as a foundation for academic success, resilience, and strong relationships. Community pride and civic engagement: empower students to become active, responsible, and contributing citizens through shared responsibility and community partnerships.
Thank you. Mr. Tesla, will you call the role, please?
Ms. Lee.
Here.
Dr. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Dr. Shelton.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Wedeman.
Here.
Dr. Larson.
Here.
And Dr. King.
Present. Thank you. So we're going to continue on to section two, our student reports. First up, we have Haverford Middle School Student Representative Erin Grubin.
Good evening, Board. Can you believe it? October is almost over. The school year is flying by, and Haverford Middle School is enjoying every minute of it. This week, we have been honoring Breast Cancer Awareness Month and Red Webber Week, showing our support and commitment to important causes. My mom actually researches medicine for cancer patients, so it's awesome to support cancer patients in this school. Next week, we will recognize and thank our first responders who work hard every day to keep our school and community safe. Our sports team have been very successful and are looking forward to another busy week ahead. Sports like soccer, volleyball, tennis, field hockey, and cross-country have been doing great in their games/races. Winter sports seasons begin soon, and we'll kick off things with a student information meeting on November fifth after school. Tomorrow night is the annual sixth-grade dance, one of the highlights of the year for some students. I remember how much fun was it for me last year, and I hope all the sixth graders have amazing time listening to K-pop Demon Hunters and Drake while stashing their Halloween costumes. Clubs and activities at HMS continue to be very popular. We have started to even collab-rate with high school students to create new opportunities, such as peer tutoring and Fifth from Friday, which are helping to strengthen our sense of community and connection. I personally attended the first Best Buddies meeting today after school, and I wake up on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays at the crack of dawn to sing songs at Seven Heaven. If you'd like to know how I'd get there, ask my dad. He was happy to be driving me at six forty a.m. while being half awake. Anyways, my first performance is on November first at the library for the Dewey Decimal Run at seven forty a.m., where my dad will be driving me again early in the morning on his off day. Finally, we are preparing for student-like conferences, and I am excited to share progress and performance with my family. Classes have been going smoothly, and sixth graders are now in the hang-up at the middle school. As you can see, there is always something exciting happening at Haverford Middle School. I encourage his families to stay connected by reading Dr. Haran's weekly family message. Thank you to the school board for your continuous service and leadership. We truly appreciate all that you do, and we want you to know how much we value our wonderful teachers and staff at the middle school for the amazing work that they do each and every day. Thank you, Board.
Good evening, everyone. It is great to be back. My name is Beatrice Cox, and I'm so happy to be here tonight to share with you all what's been happening at the high school. Before we start, a little bit about myself. I'm a junior this year. I am a captain of Haverford's Speech and Debate Team. This year, we welcomed many new members, so I'm excited and confident about making districts this year. Along with debate, I'm also the co-president of the World Affairs Club. I've been a member of this club since freshman year, so being able to now give back to it is such an honor. Outside of school, I've danced classical Russian ballet for the past eleven years. We're preparing for some big performances, which is very exciting. This semester, I'm taking a lot of new, interesting classes, one of them being the new AP Seminar course. AP Seminar is an interdisciplinary course where students investigate real-world issues, develop evidence-based arguments, and present their findings through both individual and collaborative projects. Thank you to the board for implementing this new course, and a special thank you to my AP Seminar teacher, Ms. Hartman. She really advocated, and now she's teaching it, which is so wonderful. And so while junior year can be very difficult and busy, it is also very rewarding. Now, to recent events, in the first week of high school, or the first week of October, the high school had its Activities Fair, where students came to learn more about the many clubs and extracurriculars they could sign up for. This time is especially great for the underclassmen, hoping to get more involved in the school and the community. On the fourth, Haverford hosted an in-day SAT, which I know a lot of students took advantage of. I will be taking it in December, so having this as an option takes a lot of weight off my shoulders. This week, after we had our annual Fall Blood Drive, many kids came to donate, which was so wonderful. And on the fifteenth, the Professional Touring Company, Pennsylvania Shakespeare Festival, brought a live performance of Macbeth to the high school. My friend and I checked it out, and I'm currently taking AP Lang, so watching the performance helped me witness some rhetorical choices in use. On the topic of performances, the Drama Club has announced that they will be staging the production of Tuck Everlasting. The dates are November thirteenth and fourteenth at seven P.M. and fifteenth at two P.M. and seven P.M. Tickets are eight dollars for students and ten dollars for general admissions. Come watch and support all the hard work and time our students have put into these performances. I can guarantee you will not regret it. For more upcoming events, on the thirty-first of this month, freshmen, sophomores, and juniors have the opportunity to take the PSAT. This is a great chance for those who want to become a National Merit Scholar, or for those who just want to practice for the actual SAT. As a reminder, the high school is still hosting college representatives for the students to talk to. I went to a few myself, including Georgetown, Boston College, Villanova, and even the University of Southern California. On November sixth, the Athletics Department will hold their Winter Sports Meeting, where all student athletes and their families are invited to join and learn more about the important information and expectations for winter sports. On November eleventh, we will be having our Job Fair, where local businesses to larger companies will be talking with students about different job opportunities. And on the same day, Unified Basketball will be having a game at the HHS Gymnasium and a fundraiser, where they will be raising money for our Special Olympics and Unified Sports Teams. Also taking place in our gymnasium, the Homecoming Dance will be on the twenty-first. We will be having upcoming assemblies about the dance, and when Liam presents next month, he will provide more details. For our sports news, the boys' cross-country team finished second, and the girls finished fourth at the Central League Championship. Teddy Foster, Sean Lawson, and Ryan Cleary earned first-team All Central League. Ryan Dagness earned second-team All Central League, and Fiona McGoldrick earned honorable mentions. Cross-country has their varsity districts tomorrow, where they will find out if they qualify for state, so good luck to them. For some more shout-outs, Bryce Ochetto, Will Corderman, and Charlie Robinson made it to the PI double-A District One Championship Golf Tournament. Congrats to them. Girls volleyball won their first round of the PI double-A D1 playoffs this past Tuesday, and they are actually currently playing in the second round tonight. Boys varsity soccer is also playing out back, I believe, so hopefully it's going well for them. Looking ahead, on December first, the National Honor Society will be having their induction ceremony for their new members, which I'm very much looking forward to. All inductees should arrive at six thirty P.M. One last thing, National Honor Society is currently having a Lindvilla Orchards Pie fundraiser, where all profits will be used to support our holiday gift drive to help families in our community in need. We have many different flavors, and they are twenty dollars each. If you're interested in buying a delicious pie, feel free to come up to me after the meeting. That's it for now at the high school. Thank you again to the board for allowing me to present, and thank you all for your attention. Go forwards.
So thank you to Erin and Beatrice. Next up, we have the superintendent's report from Ms. Saxa.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. King. I also loved hearing our district strategic goals with Beatrice sitting at the table, because Beatrice was one of our student representatives who was there for the development of those goals. So I wanted to just give a shout-out to her and the other students who are part of that process. A few more announcements. This evening, we were very excited to officially welcome some of our new teachers with a small reception and an opportunity for them to meet members of the board. We're so pleased with these new hires, and we look forward to working together with them for years to come. A little public service announcement. We are currently seeking elementary cafeteria or recess monitors, so if you know anyone who is looking for a part-time job, it's about two and a half hours a day in the middle of the day, please apply through our website. As you have heard in some of these reports, our high school hosted a Fords Fight for Life event, our annual event, this past Friday, providing a great opportunity to honor and celebrate and raise awareness for those who are fighting cancer and to support them and their loved ones. The event was incredibly well-organized, as always, and well-attended, and we thank all of those who participated. In construction news, Chatham Park is finished. There are just a few minor punch list items that remain. The stage and the gym floor are complete and beautiful. We are really looking forward to some of the welcoming events that now can take place and will be scheduled shortly. In other construction news, Cooper Town enjoyed the steel topping-out ceremony this week, which I didn't know what that was until this week. That is when the installation of the final and highest steel beam occurs in the new construction, and it's really nice, both at Chatham Park and at Cooper Town. Students and staff were invited to sign the beam or add a sticker to the beam so that it will live there forever with their signatures, and then they were able to witness the beam actually going into place. Just a few upcoming calendar reminders. We have an early dismissal on Friday, October thirty-first, and that means no school for students in the afternoon. And then also no school for students on Tuesday, November fourth, that is Election Day. Our staff will participate in professional development on both of those dates. I want to give a congratulations to our high school marching band, who will now be competing in the Cavalcade Championship on November first, a pending board approval at this meeting, for them to attend. Also, Dr. Hayes is excited to continue to have the opportunity to connect with the community and has scheduled two upcoming meet-and-greets. The first is next Wednesday, October twenty-ninth, at six thirty P.M., and the second is Wednesday, November nineteenth, at ten fifteen a.m. These are just informal gatherings where you can share ideas and engage in conversation with Dr. Hayes, and more information is available on our website. And it is now my pleasure to welcome the second part of the superintendent's report, students from Manoa Elementary School, who are going to share a little bit about some of the wonderful things that are going on there. I will welcome Dr. Adalizzi, their principal, and Mr. Fulton, their assistant principal, who will help get them settled up here and share some of these great programs.
Good evening, Dr. King, Ms. Saxa, and members of the board. You will notice here tonight we have several Mustangs, but we also have several Fords. There are many tall Mustangs in fifth grade, however, not quite as tall as some of our high school students tonight. The reason that we have our high school students is, one of the things that I'd like to highlight tonight are some of our mentoring programs that we already have in partnership with Haverford High School. And so just for the sake of time introduction, I'm going to kind of introduce everybody, but our students are really going to be the presenter for this evening. So first of all, a really big thank you to Ms. McNulty-Brown, Ms. Rollins, for helping organize our partnership with the high school. Ms. Butler is also here in the crowd, who is our seminar teacher, who has supported some of our students who are going to be speaking tonight. So I just wanted to start off with that. And we have Max, we have Dylan, Mackenzie, Grace, Shane, Wren, and Keegan here as well, who are all excited to share with you. And then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fulton to kind of get us started.
I'm joking. No, I'm just joking. In preparing for this presentation, I looked up a quote from one of my favorite actors, Denzel Washington. Show me a successful individual, and I'll show you someone who had real positive influences in his or her life. I don't care what you do for a living. If you do it well, I'm sure there was someone cheering you on and showing you the way, a mentor. That was a quote from Denzel Washington. And this really hits home with us, because I'm sure every single individual in this building has had a mentor or someone that they looked up to. So I just want you to listen to these wonderful, amazing role models, Fords and Mustangs, that are going to talk to us about our strategic goals that you helped create. So, we are here because our strategic goals are what you see. Dr. McKay did a great job in presenting those goals to us, so I don't want to waste any more time. I want you to hear from the students about our mentoring program and our role modeling opportunities.
We're going to talk about three different opportunities that we have currently at Manoa. The first is our seminar mentoring group, our recess referees, and our partnerships with Haverford Athletics, as well as then finally wrapping it out with our job experiences. Alright, alright. So first up, I'm going to bring up Max and Dylan, Haverford Fords.
Good evening. I'm Dylan Schindler, and this is Max Fisher, and we are seniors here at Haverford High School and leaders of the Gifted Mentorship Program, which we would like to take a moment to talk about. This is the fourth year of the program, and since its founding, the program has grown to include Cooper Town, Linwood, and Manoa. We lead the Manoa program monthly, and this will be our third year visiting the school. Each month, high school students meet with their elementary school buddies and, through activities and games, teach them what it means to be a leader and how to develop as well. These lessons, although aimed at the elementary schoolers, teach both high school and the elementary-age students. Our time with the elementary students as mentors helps us as mentors improve our communication skills and become better leaders ourselves. Every student that I have worked with has taught me something new, and I've been able to form a connection with them in some way. Many start the year shy, but by the spring, they come out of their cells telling stories of their weekends or debating who's the world's best soccer player. The skills learned by both sides can be used in many facets of life. The elementary schoolers leave the program inspired by their mentors to be confident, empathetic, and collaborative. Older buddies, in many ways, learn these same skills. Whether it's in the classroom, leading a discussion, or out in public, helping someone in need, this program gives everyone involved the skills they need to become a better communicator. We will now hear from two of our elementary school buddies about their experiences. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shane Temple, and I'm a fifth grader at Manoa Elementary School. What I liked about the Manoa Mentorship Program is how it helped me with being a leader, and it helped me with focusing on what I'm doing and not giving up. My favorite activity was the marshmallows and pasta, because we had to work together as a group to make the tallest structure. Thank you for helping me, high schoolers.
Hi, my name is Wren, and I'm a fifth grader at Manoa Elementary School. What I liked about the Manoa Mentorship Program is that it taught me to be a good leader and helped me work together. I learned how to share my ideas, how to be calm, how to be fair, and to share materials. My favorite activity was a playtime when our partners told us to put a shape. My mentor was very helpful. Thank you for listening to my presentation.
Good evening. My name is Keegan Michael Dimonick, and I am in Ms. Vaslik's first-grade class at Bedova Elementary. Ms. Grace is a student teacher in my class. She helps us with math and design. She helps us figure out problems. She is really nice. I like that she wants to help us. She helps a lot of kids in my class. We're lucky to have her in our classroom. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you, have a good evening.
Hello, all. My name is Mackenzie, and I am a senior at Haverford High School. Both this year and last, I have had the privilege of assisting Mrs. Burbidge's kindergarten class at Manoa Elementary. I am incredibly grateful for this opportunity. This experience has been the most rewarding and eye-opening part of my high school career. Every day in the classroom has deepened my passion for education and confirmed that teaching is truly the path I want to pursue. Working alongside Mrs. Burbidge and the students has allowed me to see firsthand what teaching is really about, not just the lessons and activities, but the care, preparation, and flexibility that go into every moment of the day. I've learned how important it is to create a positive and structured learning environment, how to balance the needs of many students at once, and how much creativity and patience it takes to guide young learners. From helping students with their letters and numbers to supporting classroom teams, I've seen how even small interactions can make a big difference in a child's confidence and growth. This experience has also given me a true understanding of how much happens in a single school day. Teachers wear so many hats. They are educators, caregivers, problem solvers, and motivators all at once. The day moves quickly, filled with lessons, transitions, and countless teachable moments. Watching this in action has given me immense respect for the profession and inspired me even more to dedicate myself to becoming the kind of teacher who makes a lasting impact. I am deeply thankful for the school district, Dr. Adalizzi, and Mrs. Burbidge for allowing me this opportunity to have my first hands-on experience. With this, I feel more comfortable entering my first year of college, having already spent several semesters in an elementary environment. Thank you for your time.
Before I, I have one more slide, I promise, and then can we just give it up, though, please, for you guys? Thank you to the speakers as well. That's it. Nice applause. But no, really, the amount of time, you know, it takes a lot of carriage to stand up in front of all of you guys in a very big space. And so, I think a lot of the skills that they were even able to display today are in part because of the mentorship programs on that we provide. And, you know, I think it is a really unique experience. What you see up here behind you, last year, we worked with Mr. DeCina, Mr. Donaghy, and the high school athletics department to run two different events at Manoa. One was a, like, flag football, where we brought all of our flag football teams together, and then the football players, in their bye week between their last playoff game and the Turkey Bowl, came and they helped us organize, I mean, multiple flag football games. There was over 100 kids out on the turf, and just the amount of pride one that they had for their schools, where they came from, who wanted to coach Manoa, who wanted to coach Linwood. It just was a really incredible opportunity, and so I just wanted to share that. And then we also did the same thing with the basketball team, which was really nice. And then next steps for us, you know, we're going to continue some partnerships with the high school. Obviously, there is a teacher shortage, and so helping the teacher pipeline is certainly helpful. And then, announcing fresh, hot off the press, we're going to be doing, we are partnering with our Coffee on the Path, and we're going to be doing a Coffee on the Path pop-up shop at Manoa one morning. So, that's something that Ms. Edmondson and I, and the teachers who organize our path program, have been talking about, and so please stay tuned for that, and we'll make sure you guys get the information, should you want to swing by Eagle and Manoa Road one morning for a nice hot cup of coffee. All right? Thank you, guys, so much. We appreciate everything.
I just say thank you to Dr. Adalizzi and Mr. Fulton for their organization, all this wonderful work the students did. Do any of the board members have any questions for our students before everybody goes back to their seats? Anyone have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just want to say amazing job. I appreciated their presentation. I look forward to also coming for coffee. Okay?
Wonderful. Thank you again. And that concludes the superintendent's remarks. Thank you, Dr. King.
Thank you, Ms. Saxa. All right, so that takes us to Section 4 on the agenda, Public Comment. The Board values public comment. There are two opportunities on the agenda for members of the community to provide public comment during the meeting. The first opportunity on the agenda for public comment is to allow members of the community to speak on action items listed on the agenda for a board vote. The second opportunity on the agenda is towards the end of the meeting, which allows members of the community to speak on any topic. Public comment allows for residents of the township to speak for three minutes. A timer will be set at the start of your comments, and an alarm will sound indicating that your time has been completed. Should you have any materials for members of the board, please leave them at the end of the table with Mr. Tessa for later distribution to the board. Please note that if appropriate, a member of the administration may follow up with you at a later date. Please state your name, confirm your residency, and the timer will begin for your allotted three-minute remarks. And we do not have any community members that have signed up for the first section of public comment, so we're going to continue on to Section 5. Section 5 takes us to Meeting Minutes. Have a motion to approve the official meetings from the October, the official minutes, excuse me, from the October 9th, 2025 Board Work Session. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Item 6 takes us to Board Reports, or Section 6, rather, my apologies. So, first up, for Delaware County Community College, Dr. McKay?
No report.
For the DCIU? Ms. Lee?
Sorry. Yes, I have a very brief report. As I mentioned in the past, the search for the Executive Director of the DCIU is underway. You may recall the DCIU is the agency that helped us find Dr. Hayes. I'm happy to report that we are using those exact same processes to find the next Executive Director. The search panel consists of the 15 directors of the DCIU, which is one representing each of the school districts in Philadelphia, in Delaware County. I'm sorry, I don't know where my brain is today. I previously mentioned that there was a survey that went out to community and stakeholders, which included the educators that make use of the IU. The survey did close on October 3rd, but in addition to the survey, we had input from superintendents representing all of the districts in Delaware County. The application process for this position has now closed. We anticipate having a virtual community forum with the final candidate on November 20th. I look forward to bringing additional information back when a candidate is actually selected. The candidate will have an anticipated start date of July 1st, 2026. The directors of the DCIU were at the PSBA Conference from November 19th through the 21st. We had an opportunity to interact with directors from other school districts elsewhere in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. One of the things that we were asked most about was the executive search for the new director of the DCIU, so our community is very invested. I also learned in connecting with some of the Montgomery County IU directors that they are also undergoing a superintendent search at the same time, so time is of the essence. We attended sessions on education and supporting students in AI-driven environments and supporting emotional well-being and mental health in AI-driven environments. There were some other materials I've been showering our board members with, information on mental health and environmental projects for the district. I'm sure that the educators in the room are already aware of the Countywide In-Service Day on November 4th. There'll be sessions on STEM, literacy, neurodiverse inclusion, SCL, language development, so please feel free to go to the IU's website to register. On November 13th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, the DCIU will be hosting a parent training on executive function, helping your child to stay focused. This training is free, it's offered via Zoom, and the registration link is on the website of the IU. You can also find information on Facebook. There is another IU-sponsored parent training regarding secondary employment for those with complex learning needs, and that's with children with IEPs. There will be representatives from community employment agencies. The signup, again, is on the DCIU's website, and you can find additional information on Facebook. That's it for now.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. For PSBA, Ms. Sweeterman?
Yes, so this week was the PASA PSBA School Leadership Conference, as we just heard that Tanya Lee was able to attend for DCIU, but also brings information back to our school district. And then there was the Delegate Assembly, which we had several delegates, and Kristen Larson and Mr. Shelton represented the district there, and I will turn it over to them to report on.
Thank you, Ms. Sweeterman. So, the PSBA Delegate Assembly that occurred after the conferences, where the organization sets the legislative priorities, became Ford and Harrisburg. And this year, every other year, they set the overarching goals of their advocacy. That was last year, so this year, they were doing some adjustments to the priority language. And so, the, it was actually a very short meeting. There was votes on minor wording to the platform. The most substantial change was adding a section on recommending the state not use AI or large language models to assess or screen any individual written response by a student on a statewide standardized test. Some of the other language, some of the language changes were around diversity in hiring, as well as removing sections that were no longer needed due to legislation passed in 2024 around student discipline and charter regulation and accountability. And finally, there was a change in the language in terms of how they're going to advocate for the transportation mandate from the state, and they moved that up to a higher priority. So, that would, that concludes the PSBA.
I will just add that the document will be updated and available on the PSBA website, they say, in a couple of weeks, so that board members and others can review what the legislative priority is.
I forgot to mention all the changes passed.
All they all passed here.
All right. Thank you. So, for Legislative Council, it's back to you, Dr. Shelton.
Thank you. The, thank you, Dr. King. The Legislative Council for Delaware County School District met on October 8th. This is sort of a bleak period for legislation. At the top of the agenda, there continues to be an impasse in reaching agreement on the state budget. Pennsylvania has now gone more than 100 days without a state budget, making it the only state in the nation without a spending plan at this time. Importantly, this impasse has delayed over $3.76 billion in payments to Pennsylvania school districts statewide. A substantial gap exists between the Senate and House versions of the budget. The House has passed a approximately $50 billion budget, which represents a 5% increase targeted at education and Medicaid spending. The Senate, however, has passed a more modest $48 billion spending plan with only a 0.6% increase, which is only intended to cover debt, service, and pension obligations. So, education and Medicaid funding continue to be major points of disagreement in terms of resolving Pennsylvania's state budget. Regarding legislation, there are 302 education-related bills in committee with the House and the Senate. Very few of those actually move out. One Note 1, the House recently passed House Bill 1701. This bill creates a comprehensive system to assess and improve the condition of Pennsylvania's public school buildings, and this bill requires schools to report detailed information about their buildings, including things like size, age, capacity, ownership status, to the state by December 2027. So, Mr. Tessa, you might, of course, this goes on to the Senate to be considered. This data collection is, the goal of this is to inform future decisions about state funding for school facilities, addressing the crisis in building conditions identified in the 2024 Basic Education Funding Commission Report. And as I said, this bill will now move to, for consideration in the Senate. Members of the council raised concern regarding legislation imposed to state mandates on districts and how best to advocate for individual districts. Following up on the council meeting, I was able to set up a call with State Representative Greg Vitale on October 15th, and was joined by Ms. Nocras. Representative Vitale reported that House and Senate leaders continue to negotiate the budget impasse, but reiterated the points of disagreement on education and other priorities. Also discussed with Representative Vitale were ways to track pending legislation and how best to advocate on legislation that might affect our district. At the federal level, the shutdown continues, and 87% of the Department of Education staff have been furloughed. While Title I and IDEA funding continue for now, the staffing reductions threaten future civil rights enforcement and the data collection that determines which schools qualify for federal aid. U.S. Department of Education also ended the National Blue Ribbon Schools Program in August of this year. Pennsylvania has stepped in and created its own state-level recognition program, with 13 schools initially selected as inaugural Pennsylvania Blue Ribbon Schools. The next Legislative Council session will be November 12th at 7:45 AM. I'll turn it back to Dr. King.
Thank you. So, thank you to all the board members that shared during their various reports, as well as the additional events and activities that you attended. Are there any other board members that attended a district event they'd like to share?
Can I share one more thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Bettistelli for the SPED quarterly newsletter that she puts out. It is very well done. And then, on October 14th, we had a Complex Learner Social, and that was for parents in Haverford that are complex learners. I just wanted to thank her for that effort, make sure that parents know that that is something that will be continued. Thank you also to Dr. Hayes for attending, but it was just so much work, and it was just great to be in a room with other Haverford parents from all of the schools. And so, just thank you so much for that. And please, check out the SPED newsletter if you need it, I can forward it to you, but it just has so much great information that's useful to everyone. So, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thanks. I just do want to thank Dr. Shelton for setting up the meeting with Representative Vitale. I thought it was a really great meeting and just another opportunity for us to get in front of our legislators and make sure that they understand how important public education is and their impact on our students. It was a really good conversation, like Dr. Shelton said, and I hope that we can have continued lines with our state and other representatives. So, it was a wonderful meeting to attend, and I, again, thanks for that invite. A couple of fun things that I've been able to do over the last few weeks. I've been around a bunch of the schools over some sporting events, so I've seen field hockey games, the elementary's field hockey games at Manoa and Linwood, and I was able to attend one of the Haverford High School girls' soccer varsity games. And it is just so wonderful to have the AG Cornon Stadium. I didn't have anything like that when I was in high school, and to think about our girls' soccer team playing under the lights at night with the community in attendance. I brought a couple of the girls from the soccer team that I coached, and it was just such a magical night to see, you know, the girls being spotlight, under the spotlights like that. So, it just reminded me how wonderful this community is and how important it is to invest in our public schools, in the facilities, and just what a wonderful feeling that our high school students get playing under those lights. And I know that the, you know, the girls that I brought got a lot watching them and imagined themselves playing there someday. So, it was a really wonderful experience. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. So, as a school board, we want our community to know that the board's negotiating team has been working diligently through the negotiation process with the Education Association, and we will continue to do so. At no point has either side left the table or the negotiation process, and we will continue to engage in conversations. We absolutely value our teachers. We firmly believe that they should have a very competitive salary and a benefits package. We believe that based upon the most recent offer, Haverford teachers will remain among the highest-paid public teachers, public school teachers, excuse me, in this country and region. It is our goal to come to a contract settlement that helps us to retain and attract an excellent and strong teaching staff. We also have a responsibility to consider our financial realities. We are a public school system that receives most of its funding not from the state, but from local property taxes. We must be mindful of that balance and also remember that salaries are the largest part of our budget. We must also plan for operational expenses such as the upkeep of our facilities, daily operations, funding for resources, student programming, and future hiring as well. We have heard from the community members who have spoken about the quality of our teachers. We agree. This district is incredibly fortunate to have talented and dedicated teaching staff. We want to ensure that we provide a comprehensive and competitive package that allows that allows us to value our other exceptional staff and future needs. Recently, the board's negotiating team offered a salary and benefits package that we believe pushes the limits of what this district can responsibly fund while considering our other financial responsibilities and our limited ability to generate revenue. The board's negotiating team remains in communication with our teachers' union and looks forward to the opportunity to coming together and to move forward. We are committed to working through this together and to provide a fair and equitable agreement so that our teachers will retain what we believe is one of the strongest public teaching contracts in this region. That takes us to Section 7, Finance and Facilities. Can I have a motion to approve items B through E as presented on the agenda?
Okay, moved.
For a second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 7F, Bill List. Can I have a motion to approve the disbursements for payment totaling $4,329,195.73?
Shelton moved.
The tally's second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item 7G, Change Orders. Can I have a motion to accept the recommendation of owner's representative CB Development Services Incorporated and authorize the change orders totaling $176,145.44 as listed?
Okay, moved.
For a second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Item, I'm sorry, Section 8, Human Resources. Can I have a motion to approve items 8V and 8C as presented on the agenda?
Shelton moved.
The tally's second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Section 9 takes us to Pupils Services. 9A is Out-of-District Placement. Can I have a motion to approve the following out-of-district educational service contracts for the following students as listed and discussed at the 10-9-25 work session?
Shelton moved.
Larson's second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. 9C, Contract Approval. Can I have a motion to approve the following transportation contract for services provided to a district student for the 2025-2026 school year?
Larson moved.
Shelton seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Oh, I skipped B. I apologize. 9B for out-of-district educational contract. Can I have a motion to approve the following out-of-district educational contract for a student?
Larson moved.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So I believe that I should be at 9D. Thank you. Educational Service Agreement. Can I have a motion to approve the following educational service agreement for a district student? This agreement covers reimbursement for privately obtained legitimate educational services as incurred by the family for the benefit of the student.
Larson moved.
Shelton seconded.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Section 10, Academics and Instruction. 10A, can I have a motion to approve the student educational excursion listed below?
Which one's moved?
The tally's second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Good luck.
They have a Western-themed show, just definitely.
Show's very good, I think, I think they, they seconded the last competition, so.
Nice. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Section 11 takes us to Policy. 11A, Policy 137, Home Education Programs. Can I have a motion to approve the first reading of Policy 137, Home Education Programs, and the corresponding AR as discussed at the 10-9-25 board work session?
Snodgrass moved. Larson's second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I can give some updates on what the board's discussion looked like around Policy 137 and the AR. Some updates included changing the definition for co-curricular and extracurricular activities to align to Pennsylvania's school code. We also made sure that references, references to child were replaced with the term student. There was also some minor cleanup of language and formatting that to replace. We discussed as a board the inclusion of the, the board's, sorry, the district's mission statement in this policy. So we talked about the importance of making sure that our home education program is mission-aligned, but not naming a specific mission, knowing that a mission could change, and then if the mission changed, we would need to bring the policy back for all the layers of working. We also talked about clarifying the purpose of this, of the policy and having that statement upfront. So making sure that the, that we're talking about providing guidance, it was important. Yes. Yes, we just clarified the purpose there because it was getting a little bit muddled. We also emphasized the importance of making sure that the policy with the changes did align to the AR. So the AR, you'll see, even though the AR isn't required to go through the same level of review and board approval that the policy is, we want to make sure that there's alignment between the two documents so that our administrative team can actually carry out the policy in the day-to-day. So we noted that it was lengthy and repetitive, there was some overlap. We need to make sure, though, in our discussions with council, that the policy still maintained all the language that's required by state law, but that it was accessible and readable. So that is what we move forward to today, this evening, and you have access to see all the changes which were highlighted in your files.
Thank you, Dr. Larson. Any additional discussion?
I have a couple of things. First, I want to thank Ms. Weederman and Dr. Hayes, who's not here, but they, they were both on the phone with me for, I think, a half an hour each before the meeting last week, or last time that I couldn't be here for. So, I appreciate them going through the policies with me and getting the comments out that the drafts right now look a lot better than they did before. I would say, I have a comment on the, the policy itself, and I don't know if this is just the way that we're writing our policies now. I'm still just a little stuck on why the Authority section is called Authority when that's really the only section that has any sort of policy in the policy, and that to me is pretty confusing. So I know that we have the citations here afterward that have the Authority in them. I would just still challenge, if you look at this policy, there's no policy here except for in that, that paragraph. That is the only paragraph that has a policy, right? So this is our policy statement, and I'm just not sure that a layperson reading this who isn't familiar with all of our policies understands what the policy is and why it would be under the Authority section. So, I think that we should change that heading, at least. Other people agree with me, but I think it's confusing.
So just to clarify, you would like to remove the heading altogether or have a different word in place of Authority?
Yeah, Larry, do we need an Authority section? Like, is, is that something that we've been doing? I know Justin does the policies a lot, so sorry to put you on the spot.
No, that, excuse me, that's okay. I'm just, I'm just perusing your other policies, and you seem to go between policies that say Authority and then policies that contain Purpose.
Yeah.
I don't think the heading is required.
Okay.
You could remove the heading without impacting the statement within the policy.
Yeah, I, I think we should just remove it. In my opinion. Is that okay?
Okay, so just so I'm clear, how would this then, is it, would it have the Purpose and then Authority is removed, and then it goes right into Home Education Programs for students? And then definitions?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, I, I think that I would put the, the section right now that's under Authority, I would put that first, and then, without a heading. And then I would have a heading that's Purpose, that says the purpose of this policy is to set forth the district's obligations, just because I don't really see how this is anything but the actual policy. Like I said, I know that there are citations here, and we see citations everywhere in all of our policies because a, a lot of our policies come straight from the code, and, and so we're, we're referring to them, and we refer to them within the definition sections as well. So, you know, that's how I would, that's how I would rearrange this to make it more easily understandable by the regular person, put our policy upfront, right? And then you can say the purpose of this is bad, but.
So I actually think it's helpful to start off with a Purpose and explain what the purpose of the policy is, and have that be the first section. Now, in terms of the word Authority, I do think there needs to be some sort of separation. Maybe Authority is not the proper heading, but I, I think that we need something there. But I like the current layout of, of the policy as it's written, with Purpose being first. We'll call the No Name section next, and then Definitions to follow. But we, I do believe we need headings.
Okay.
I'm just looking at some of our previous policies that we've revised throughout this audit. Looks like it goes, unless I'm reading this wrong, like Purpose, there's a Purpose statement, and then Authority comes next. Some of these are going back to 2024.
Is there another word besides Authority that we could use as a, as a heading that you are suggesting, Ms. Snodgrass?
I mean, honestly, it's the policy, like this, you know what I mean? It, Authority to me means where is this coming from? So, I, I don't, I don't really have a, a different suggestion and what, that we should have something in place of that heading. Because I, I just, I don't like having Authority there when that's our only policy statement. Yeah, the statement, because it's our policy statement, as, as the heading.
So instead of Authority, you're suggesting put Statement?
If we want headings, yeah.
Just from a purely, like, consistent, like a perspective of consistency, would this kind of mess up how we've been revising our policies? I'm just trying to understand, like, is Authority, like, superfluous here, inappropriate here, or is it more of a formatting concern? And then does that create inconsistency with some of the other policies?
It do.
If I may, the, the headings are merely headings. They are not substantive within policy. That word Authority, the word Purpose, the word Definitions has no bearing on how you implement them or how it's defined. So you could remove all of the headings, you can keep all the headings. The headings can be different within the policies. I don't think that it impacts the prior policies that we've already been reviewing that contain the word Authority. And as you move forward, if you choose to have a different word, you can make those modifications. Like, the, the headings are merely guidance, they're not guidance within the document. They're not substantive statements of the policy.
So whether it stays or goes, it's not really, it's not really mattered.
I'm not trying to change it substantively, I'm just trying to change it to make sense. We're not a board of one, so if other people agree with, disagree with me.
I mean, wouldn't an Authority, wouldn't an Authority statement, I'm just looking at some other examples, be like, "Board hereby establishes pursuant to law, blah, 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 education program." Like, is that an Authority statement?
Yeah, the way that I see Authority statement is where are we getting the authority to make this policy? And so that's, that's where, that I was just, when I read through it the first time, and the second time too, you know, thinking about, I'm someone who, I want to implement a home education program for my student, and I want to know what the policy of the board is. And I just think in the first reading, I, I didn't, I didn't really see it. I didn't really understand what it was, just because Authority to me just didn't make sense in there. So, I, I'm just trying to make it more easily accessible. Maybe it's just me, I don't know.
I don't really have any strong opinion, but, you know, we could make it, we could give rid of Authority. And, I mean, I think it's pretty clearly stated that we allow home education here and the guidance of state law.
We just had the Purpose in that first statement, and then went right into home education programs, all under one section? I think that addresses.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I suggested. The district just removed Authority and have the Purpose statement be two paragraphs.
Any other discussion? And so just so that we're clear, we are now removing the word Authority. Going forward, are we considering removing Authority in other places as well, or just here?
I think it'll be policy-dependent, and, and whether, whether it makes sense for that policy or not.
I think it would be helpful if we just get some clarification, and, and Mr. Baj, you may not have that tonight, but going forward, use of headings, what they should imply, what, what it should follow, follow under, because I certainly want to make sure they were consistent with how we are editing these policies, and so that we're not going to be coming back the next time to essentially put back something or take something off that we could have done the first time.
We can do that.
Alright, so aside from that, any other discussion?
I have other comments, yeah. Looking at the ARs, my understanding is that a lot of this comes from code, right? And so I know that it is our practice not to add citations into the administrative regulations, but I just think for this one, because so much of it is coming from the code, and it's, it's talking specifically about implementing this, and like I said, you know, thinking about someone who is looking over this policy because they want to understand how it's being implemented in our district, I do think it would be helpful here, and maybe we don't need them in line, like, we have them with the policy itself, but adding them at the end as end notes or something, and just so that if someone is going here, they understand where this is coming from, and that it's not just the school district of Haverford Township saying that this is what we're going to do because we want to, but having some sort of reference to the, the code provisions that this is coming from.
Could we include a link that just takes the reader back to the policy?
I'm sorry, can you say that again? I couldn't hear you.
Could we include a hyperlink here that would just take anyone who's looking for the citations back to the policy?
Instead of putting the code provisions at the end?
Yeah, that's not something that we're doing in all of our policies. I, I mean, I'm, yeah, I'm agnostic here, but I'm just, I'm off some options.
If that's, you know, if that's what you prefer, I, I think having the code provisions in the AR is, is fine. I think I've talked about it in, in some other ARs as well, that are less, that are less, you know, focused on just our tradition and practice, and more actually focused on, we're doing it this way because this is the way that the code tells us. And honestly, like, I'm, with something like this, I understand why it is in the AR, but for this one specifically, I could imagine a lot of this being in the policy itself because it comes from code. And so if we're going to keep all of this, we want a really pithy code or policy, which is what we have, you know, then, and we have all of this information, I know it has edits on it, but it's 10 pages. Yeah, I mean, I think that we should just put the code provisions in here because it'd make it easier for people.
Cross-reference other circulars and guides from the Department of Education in relation to referencing statute?
Yeah, right. So in the cross-references, you could just list all of the code provisions there after these circulars.
I think this is a question for Mr. Dodds. I mean, given that- I mean, given that a lot of what is in the AR is coming from statute, as Ms. Snodgrass referenced, like, should that be put back in the policy and taken out of the AR?
I think the AR follows the code very closely, and the code lays out the requirements for the home education program. I think your practice has been, as Ms. Snodgrass said, a more shorter, pithy policy to say you're going to follow the statute, and then the AR follows the code more closely, which gives you the flexibility to change your procedures if the legislature should change the home education statute. As an example, the home education statute itself was changed three years ago to go into effect in the '23, '24 school year, I think, with different provisions. So it allows for that flexibility to comply with the law, three-year administrative regulation.
Actually, I think that came up during our discussion at the last, our work session. So I apologize for asking the question.
It's okay, I just like to point out that Mr. Baj and I tend to, we can be consistent.
Yeah, and I appreciate consistency, and I think that that's important, but I also think that these policies talk about very, very different things, and sometimes they do need to be treated a little bit differently. And just because we don't generally put citations in there doesn't mean that it doesn't warrant it in this one, probably some other ones. Like I said, I think I brought it up in other cases too, when it's just so heavily based on the code, to just make, to let everyone know where is this coming from, it's not something that we made up.
Any additional discussion? So for the changes that were discussed this evening, are those able to be made and we can continue on?
In my opinion, yes, they're not substantive changes, they're cosmetic changes to the policy AR.
And at this time, we are still having two readings before adoption, so I think it's something the Board should discuss at an upcoming work session, whether we continue that practice, but for this policy specifically, it'll go to a second reading. We'll look at it again, see the changes, and then after that, it'll be up for adoption. So it's going to be with us for a while.
To clarify, we're just voting on the policy because we don't need to amend it.
Uh huh, that's correct. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Section 12, Other Items, Superintendent's Goals. Have a motion to approve the superintendent's goals for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Person read.
Chilton, second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Section 13 takes us to the second opportunity for public comment. Just a reminder that this section, the public comment, is for members of the community to make a comment or statement about any school-related topic. I do have a list here of individuals that have signed up. When you come to the podium, please state your name. There'll be a timer that will start. At the end of the timer, please conclude your remarks. For the first person I have signed up is Adam Nancaro.
I didn't think I needed that. Adam Nancaro, President of HTA. Good evening, Board members, colleagues, community members. Our educators have shown tremendous patience and unwavering commitment through many difficult months, but I must express that the sense of anger and disappointment among our membership has become pronounced. Teachers have continued to serve students at the highest level, even as their requests for fairness and respect remain unanswered. Tonight, I urge both sides to simply sit at the bargaining table, because true negotiation only happens when we are sitting together in open and honest conversation, not through online commentary, not through public statements, nor through email. I feel it's also important to address the tone of our current climate. Antagonistic language, whether it comes from official statements or informal exchanges, creates division and undermines the possibility of productive progress. It is natural for all involved to feel the weight of these words, and it only heightens their frustrations and stifles discussions. The situation cannot continue as it is. We do not seek conflict for its own sake, but we are absolutely resolute in our determination for a fair contract. We are not looking for conflict, we are looking for conversation. At the same time, I must be clear, our members' frustration is real, and their resolve is strong and ready for action. Let's move forward with integrity, respect, and action. The time to finish bargaining is now. Thank you.
The next person that I have signed up is Kristen Luxier.
Good evening, Mrs. Saxa, Dr. King, and members of the school board. My name is Kristen Luxier, and I am both a Havreford School District teacher and a mother of Havreford students, children who are currently and will one day be taught by the very educators you're negotiating with. Since August, the district has added less than $1 million to its offer. In that same time, the Havreford Township Education Association has reduced its proposal by $3 million, more than half of the difference between us. That is compromise, that is good faith. Yet your current offer still leaves half of our teachers, the veteran educators who built this district's reputation for excellence, with less than a 2% annual increase. With inflation near the same rate, this is not a raise, it's a loss in real income every single year. For new teachers, you continue to require enrollment in a high-deductible silver healthcare plan, something no other district in the county demands. That is not progress, it is punishment. And still, our elementary teachers' requests have gone unanswered, both for a meaningful time during the day to collaborate and problem-solve with colleagues, and for dedicated time to craft thoughtful, accurate report cards that truly reflect each child's growth. For the past 15 years, Havreford teachers have repeatedly accepted less, pausing step increases, taking smaller raises and concessions to avoid furloughs and protect programs for students. We have been generous, even when it meant tightening our own budgets. Because of that restraint, the district's current budget deficit is far smaller than those of our surrounding districts at the start of their negotiations. Havreford's financial stability has been built in large part on the backs of its teachers. For perspective, every administrator in this district has received at least a 3% raise every year for the past decade, and more than 4% this past year. The same is true for our colleagues in HESPA, who also receive between 3% and 4% raises. To be clear, I believe you all deserve those raises. You work hard and serve this community with pride, but I wish this Board respected me, my children's teachers, enough to offer the same. By refusing to come to the table, this Board is sending a clear message. Teaching in Havreford is no longer seen as a lifelong profession, but as a short-term stop. You are making it harder for dedicated educators to remain here, and harder still to attract the next generation of great teachers. And to put that in perspective, a teacher in Havreford with my same experience and education as one in Lower Marion will earn nearly $450,000 less by the time they retire in 17 years. That is not just a difference in salary, it is a difference in respect, value, and livelihood. Our teachers are home tonight, they are grading, planning, caring for their families, and preparing for another day of giving their best to Havreford's children. Even in status quo, they continue to show up. But goodwill has limits. If the Board continues to refuse meaningful negotiations, teachers will have no choice but to work to the rule of their contract, doing only what they are paid and contracted to do. And the irony is striking, when teachers simply do the jobs they are paid for, not volunteering hours before and after school, not running unpaid clubs, not giving up their lunch to help a child, it's labeled as a protest. The truth is, that's the clearest point, the clearest sign of how much teachers already give beyond their contract every single day. That's the hypocrisy, that doing our actual job feels like a step less. We believe the person leading your team may not have provided you with the full truth. He has convinced you that this offer is good enough, that our members will accept it. It was very clear in our membership meeting last night that they will not. Teachers feel disrespected by this Board and angry that they're still not valued by building this district into what it is today. This is more than a labor dispute, it's about respect, equity, and the soul of our schools. You have created a rift that will take years to heal, but you have the power to start repairing it tonight by returning to the table in good faith, showing this community that you value the educators who make Havreford what it is. Our teachers are the heart of Havreford. As a teacher, a parent, and a resident, I ask you, honor that heart before it breaks beyond repair. Please, please be a Ford. Thank you.
The next person is Katie Mummy. Please just state your name, confirm your residency. At the end of the timer, please conclude your remarks.
My name is Katie Mummy, I am a resident of Havreford Township. I'm a parent at Manoa Elementary, where I have twin fourth-grade daughters, and I am here again to speak in support of our teachers and their right to a fair competitive agreement. So I've actually only spoken publicly in a setting like this once before, and it was last month right here. Usually, I make my voice just heard at the ballot, at the polls, but this matters just so much to so many of us. And I saw the newest developments today, as we've discussed, and I'm really, really frustrated at how things have been going down with all of this. These teachers just deserve better, they just do. There was a gentleman at the last meeting that said something that really stuck with me. It was something to the effect of, when our kids look back and they are thinking about their best memories from their time in school, they are not remembering the smart boards that were in their classrooms, they're thinking about the teachers who mattered to them. That's true for me. My elementary school experience brings up memories of Mrs. Fox. She made me love math when no one else could do that. Mrs. Bracy opened my eyes to the joy of music and the love of performing. And I really think that that's where all of our minds go. You think about your time back in school, you think about the people, you think about the teachers. And our kids, when you ask them, what are their favorite things about school? Full transparency, they usually are going to say free pretzel day, and fair enough, that's like really awesome too. But to be serious, they are thinking about the teachers. It is them, the people, that are creating the core memories for our kids. They are demonstrating what it means to be good humans. They're making sure that our kids have the skills, the knowledge that they need for their futures, and I shouldn't have to tell you that the impact that positive reinforcement and caring guidance has on children. You know this. I believe that you actually really understand the importance of having the kind of incredible professionals that we are so grateful to have here in these roles. But talk is freaking cheap, man, you've got to start acting on these words. Listen, it is easy to think short-term, I get that. Demanding a fair competitive agreement for these professionals, which let's be perfectly clear, they absolutely deserve, it is not just about the next few years. The kids they teach are the next leaders, they're the next workforce, they're the next researchers, they're the next creatives, the next artists, they are the next innovators, humanitarians, medical professionals, they are the next responsible adults, they are the next ethical generation. That is so important right now, it matters so much. Who's preparing them for that? The teachers. Their work is crucial, they deserve a better deal and better treatment. And as parents, we do not just want them teaching and guiding our kids, we need them. You need them. Let's get this done. Thank you.
My name is Abby Snodsky. I don't care, we've got a million people to run for. I am a resident of Havreford Township. I moved here specifically for the schools. I have two young children at Chadon Park, and as someone who has absolutely hate-balled the speaker the fact that we are now on our third meeting in the classroom and have no contract signed, I'm infuriated enough to gain the courage to stand up here and speak in support of the teachers. I've mulled over a million things I wanted to say tonight, but most of them have already been pointed out to you all. I had sat through every one of these meetings. And frankly, I'd rather be reading my kids' bedtime stories, and I haven't heard a single person speak out against the teachers and what they are asking for. So as elected officials, to serve our interests, I'm asking you, whose interests are you for?
The next person I have to speak is Ben Bedard.
Good evening, good evening, Board members. My name is Ben Bedard. I've been, I live on County Line Road, and I've been a resident for 18 years. Teaching is not a lost art, but regard for it has lost its tradition. Jacques Barzine said that. My daughter asked me to read something that she wrote. As a lifelong resident of Havreford Township and a current junior at the high school, I've seen firsthand how hard our teachers work. They deserve much more than they're paid for what they put up with. They're more than just teachers, they're therapists, mentors, and leaders during some of the most important developmental years of a person's life. As my sociology teacher, Mr. Weinstock taught our class, agents of socialization are critical for children and teens' development, and school is one of the biggest agents in a child's life. School expands a child's view of the world and teaches them about perspectives they may not have known about before. Teachers are part of this. My elementary school teachers did not just teach me how to solve fractions, but also to make friends. My middle school teachers did not teach me how to analyze what I was reading, but how to cope with the problems in a world I did not understand. My high school teachers didn't just teach me how to write chemical formulas, but what I wanted to do with my future. I was in fifth grade when COVID-19 started and returned back to in-person school in seventh grade. Our teachers were teaching in a brand-new environment and situation while balancing their own lives in a quickly-changing and uncertain world. My teachers make school worth going to, and they should be paid accordingly. My wife and I work together, and we live two blocks from our office. We don't envy anyone else's commute. That being said, we could have bought a house in any township in the Philly suburbs. My wife attended school in Lower Marion, and she wanted something different for when we sent our daughter to school. So we chose Havreford Township for its great schools. And the reason that the schools are so great are the teachers. Now, I love to hear your goal statements. I've always been a big believer in saying, what is the goal here? But I have to ask you, Board members, and I thank you for your service, but if your goal is to drag out the process of contract negotiations, if it's to aggravate your teachers, is it to sully the reputation of Havreford Township schools? If all of that is true, then I say you have met your goal. Thank you.
That concludes community members that have signed up for a public comment for this section. I'm sorry, so you do have to sign up ahead of time, but you're able to sign up for the next meeting, okay? All right, so for Section 14, Information Executive Session, the Board met before tonight's meeting to discuss with Council a personnel-related litigation matter in the Court of Common Pleas of Delaware County. The next regular public meeting of the Board is a work session scheduled to be held on November 6, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the Boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. Have a motion to accept to adjourn the meeting.